Good evening. It is March 2nd. This is the regular meeting of Troy City Council. I am Marty Baker, President. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance led tonight by Mr. Bobby Phillips, followed by the advocate. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Our Heavenly Father, please continue to wrap your arms around our world. We ask that you continue to heal the sick, give comfort to the inferno, and guide your followers to spread your word. We ask that you watch over all the women and men who sacrifice their family, time, and lives in order to protect and serve in whatever capacity for the betterment of our society. We ask that those less fortunate find comfort and come to improve their situation in some manner through the generosity of others. Lay a calming hand over all of our deliberations in order for reason and common sense to prevail. And please be with the family who has lost the majority of their children this past weekend. Please give them comfort and guidance and surround them with love. In all these things we pray, amen.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mrs. Oda, here. Mr. Flyer?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mrs. Snead?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Swayzer?
Here.
Mr. Tremblay?
Here.
All members of council are present. Tonight we have a public hearing on Resolution R. 6, 2015. Mrs. Knight, please read the resolution. Resolution number R. 6, 2015. Resolution approving the application of Sherri H. Monkauer to place land in agricultural district. Okay, and now declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this resolution? Anyone who wants to speak in opposition of it? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Mrs. Knight, please read the minutes of the February 17th meeting of Troy City Council. Minutes of Council, February 17, 2015. Committee reports, committee on economic development, recommended that legislation be prepared adopting standard statement of services related to the Cheney Annexation 1.243 acre parcel in Concord Township. Streets and sidewalks committee recommended the resolution necessity be prepared regarding Street State Project 3B. There was a discussion on the committee report. Resolution number R. 4, 2015, declaring necessity of constructing sidewalks was given first title reading and was adopted. Resolution number R. 5, 2015, establishing municipal services for territory to be proposed to be annexed in Concord Township, first reading and adopted. Following various comments, council adjourned at 7:28. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move to accept the minutes as written, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Kendall to accept the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
May I have your approval? Moving on to committee reports, the Community and Economic Development Committee met, and Chairman Mr. Phil Twist has their report.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee met on February 17, 2015, regarding the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that the final plaque of Section 8A and 8B of the Nottingham subdivision be approved. The plaque is in general accordance with the approved preliminary plan and there be a total of nineteen building lots. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to accept the final plaque of the Nottingham Estate subdivision, Section 8A and 8B, as presented, including the dedication of the right-of-way. And that's respectfully submitted by the Commissary, John Swayzer, and myself as Chairman of Phil Twist.
Are there any questions from the council on the report? Do you have anything further?
Not at this time.
Thank you. The next report's from the Finance Committee, and Chairman Mr. Tom Kendall.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee members Swayzer and Tremblay met on February 23rd to review the recommendation of the Tax and Senate Review Council regarding the compliance status of the Troy Town Park TIF and six enterprise zone agreements that were placed as of December 31st, 2014. Such review and report is required on an annual basis. The TIRC has recommended that the TIF agreement be continued and that all six enterprise zone agreements be continued as all agreements are in full compliance. All agreements actually exceed the employment commitments. The committee recommends legislation be prepared, accepting the recommendation of the TIRC, that all six enterprise zone agreements, 25, 28, 29, 31, 33, and 34, be continued as they are in full compliance, that the Troy Town Park TIF be continued. In that, the city must file an annual report with the Ohio Development Services Agency by the end of March regarding the continuance of the agreement and the TIF. We support emergency legislation. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swayzer, Mr. Tremblay, and myself as Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Are there any questions from the council on the report? You may continue, Mr. Kendall.
Thank you. Committee members Swayzer and Tremblay met on February 23rd to consider the request of Joe and Kim Plants, one of the three business owners on the Small Business Development Revolving Loan Fund, SPD loan made to Jumpy's Laser Tag Inc. Part of the security on the SPD loan is a second mortgage on the personal residences of the three business owners in a rental property owned by Joe and Kim Plants. Mr. and Mrs. Plants are seeking to refinance the bank loans on their properties in order to obtain a lower interest rate and have requested that the city subordinate its lien position to Unity National Bank. All loan payments are current. Noting that the loan would continue to be adequately secured, it is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared approving this subordination of the mortgage lien with Joe and Kim Plants associated with the loan related to Jumpy's Laser Tag. We also support emergency legislation so that the loan closing for Mr. and Mrs. Plants is not delayed. And this too is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swayzer, Mr. Tremblay, and myself as Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Are there any questions from the council on the report? Do you have anything further, Mr. Kendall?
No, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Allen Clark has our next report from the Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. This is regarding the appointment of Assessment Equalization Board, setting meeting of the board. Committee members Twist and Kendall met on February 27th to consider appointments to the Assessment Equalization Board, AEB, and set the meeting date and time of such board. This board will hear appeals filed related to the estimated assessments for the downtown sidewalk program Phase 3B. The AEB may only consider objections based on if the cost allocations meet the criteria of assessment applied by front footage and if the front footage measurement is correct. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, that the Assessment Equalization Board meet on March 24th, 2015, at 6:30 p.m. at City Hall, and that the board members be Renee Gummerlock, William Rozell, and Roberta Jacobs. Based on the date, the AEB will be meeting. We support emergency legislation. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Kendall, Mr. Twist, and myself as Chairman.
Are there any questions on this report? Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
Do any other committees have any reports this evening? We now open the meeting to citizen comments. There is a two-minute timeout at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Livingston is our timekeeper. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to any of the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address before addressing We will continue with resolutions then, and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R. 6, Resolution number R. 6, 2015. Resolution approving application of Sherri H. Monkauer to place land in agricultural district. This is a piece of land on vital growth that has actually been in an agricultural district for a number of years. This is the first reading, and I believe the committee is meeting on this coming Thursday. Thank you. Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 7, 2013. Resolution number R. 7, 2015. Resolution accepting the recommendations of the Tax and Senate Review Council and declaring an emergency. This provides that all the enterprise zone agreements are in full compliance. This is emergency, as a report must be filed with the state before the end of March. This is the first reading. Are there any questions from the council on the report?
Move for suspension, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Phillips to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Move for adoption, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swayzer to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 8, 2015. Resolution number R. 8, 2015. Resolution accepting the recommendation of the Tax and Senate Review Council for the Troy Town Park TIF and declaring an emergency. The committee met and recommended that the Town Park TIF be continued. This is the first reading. Also an emergency because a report must be filed by the end of March. Any comments or questions from council?
Move for suspension, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 9, 2015. Resolution number R. 9, 2015. Resolution appointing Assessment Equalization Board and declaring an emergency. This appoints the board members of Renee Gummerlock, William G. Rozell, and Roberta Jacobs. Also says that if necessary for the AEB to meet, the meeting will be held on March 24th at 6:30 p.m. at City Hall. This is an emergency and that the case on the date that the AEB will be meeting, first reading. Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension, second.
Been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Phillips to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 8, 2015. Resolution number R. 8, 2015. Resolution accepting the recommendation of the Tax and Senate Review Council for the Troy Town Park TIF and declaring an emergency. The committee met and recommended that the Town Park TIF be continued. This is the first reading. Also an emergency because a report must be filed by the end of March. Any comments or questions from council?
Move for suspension, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 9, 2015. Resolution number R. 9, 2015. Resolution appointing Assessment Equalization Board and declaring an emergency. This appoints the board members of Renee Gummerlock, William G. Rozell, and Roberta Jacobs. Also says that if necessary for the AEB to meet, the meeting will be held on March 24th at 6:30 p.m. at City Hall. This is an emergency and that the case on the date that the AEB will be meeting, first reading. Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension, second.
Been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Phillips to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
This resolution is adopted. I will pass it around to the council. We'll move on to ordinances then, and ask Mrs. Knight to read Ordnance 03, 2015. For December 03, 2015, ordinance accepting the final plaque of Nottingham subdivision, Section 8A, and Nottingham subdivision, Section 8B, and the city of Troy, Ohio, are dedicating the right-of-way. The subdivision sections conform to the preliminary plan. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. This is the first reading. Are there any questions from council on the ordinance?
Move for suspension, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted. Mrs. Knight, please read Ordnance 04, 2015. Ordnance number 04, 2015. Ordnance releasing mortgage lien for BBA LLC, William and Becky Arthur, and declaring an emergency. The loans to the Arthur's have been paid in full, and the names released, and therefore that is an emergency, so community release without, for that, first reading. Are there any questions from council on the ordinance?
Move for suspension, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Clark to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted. Mrs. Knight, please read the final ordinance of the evening. Ordnance 05, 2015. Ordnance number 05, 2015. Ordnance subordinating a mortgage lien for Jumpy's Laser Tag Inc., Joe and Kevin Plants, and declaring an emergency. After this subordination, the city of Troy will still be adequately secured on this loan, so that the loan for the plants can be closed without delay. This is the first reading. Are there any questions from council on the ordinance?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to abstain from voting because I am employed at the bank that's involved in the situation, please. Thank you.
Move for suspension, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Clark to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. And I believe that Mr. Heath will need to state that each time he can. Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Abstaining, please.
Move for adoption, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swayzer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
This resolution is adopted. I will pass it around to the council. We'll move on to ordinances then, and ask Mrs. Knight to read Ordnance 03, 2015. For December 03, 2015, ordinance accepting the final plaque of Nottingham subdivision, Section 8A, and Nottingham subdivision, Section 8B, and the city of Troy, Ohio, are dedicating the right-of-way. The subdivision sections conform to the preliminary plan. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. This is the first reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
This resolution is adopted. I will pass it around to this time.
We'll move on to ordinances then, and ask Mrs. Knight to read ordinance oh three, 2015.
Ordinance number oh three, 2015. Ordinance accepting the final plaque of Nottingham subdivision section eight A and Nottingham subdivision section eight B, and the city of Troy, Ohio, are dedicating the right-of-way. The subdivision sections conform to the preliminary plan. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. This is the first reading.
Are there any questions in the council on the ordinance?
Move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.